Trustee's to order, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as your honorable Lilly Kavanaugh gives the invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Christie, please take the roll.
Ms. Kavanaugh.
Here.
Mr. Christie here. Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. McCray?
Here. Armed present. Next, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Supported by Trustee Kennedy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have citizen comments. So, I will ask every-- because I have a few. So, I would ask everybody to-- when they could already have a comment to come up here to the microphone, please give your name and address for the record and tell us what's on your mind. This is a listening exercise for the board. We won't have communication. That way, you get three minutes uninterrupted to say your piece. And we have these so that we'll be able to follow up with you on whatever the issue is. So, if somebody else-- because there's five, and I don't know if everybody have a little different view on this. If you have-- if somebody's already said what you're thinking, I have this. So, you don't have to come up and speak again, but you can. Okay? So, anyway, the first person I have up is William Myers. Yeah, well, you're on top of the-- you're on top of the pile, sir. Okay, right in the mic there, sir. Name and address.
William Myers, 20075 Olympia. I'm here today--
Can we keep-- I want to be able to hear Mr. Myers. Go ahead, sir.
I'm here today about them accessing the cul-de-sac in which I live on. They filled in the ditch. They moved the drain up high. There used to be a three-foot ditch in the cul-de-sac that all the water ran into. Now, it's running into our basements. And on top of that, you're moving the mess that's in Beach Daily and moving it in front of our homes and into the cul-de-sac. And I have a problem with that. I wanted to have a hearing on relevance. And if you need it for access for emergency vehicles, such as the CED is already ruled on, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Patricia, and I can't say your last name, so I'm sorry. Please, you're next. Sorry, Patricia. That's all right. I'd rather not say it than say it wrong. Okay? But name and address for record, please.
Patricia Prue, 20417 Sumner, Redford Township. I just had a bunch of questions. I just learned about this an hour ago. I am a school bus driver, but not for Redford. And I heard that all the buses are going to go down. But my question is, are they going down Norfolk from Beach Daily? Or are they coming in all directions? What direction are they coming into and what direction are they leaving? And I hate to say this, but you're going to block a lot of driveways. You're going to add-- the diesel fuel is a problem too. Being a bus driver, although it's a limited ten minutes, it's never going to happen in the wintertime because we're cold. We're bus drivers. Is there a turnaround? Is it coming straight back out or is it going onto Pembroke? I mean, I didn't even know anything about this, but these are questions that the citizens should be aware of how this is working. And how did this get started? Who started this whole thing of sending the buses in that direction? Was there a problem up front where the buses were? Because I have grandchildren in that school. And we used to just do lineups to take the kids home. And then the buses were in front. So, did something start up that started all this? There's a lot of questions. And maybe we'll get some answers someday.
And like I said, this isn't a communication, but we're hearing it. I'm writing, and we're going to take the whole packet now to where it needs to go to get some answers.
And are you going to give the people on that block phone numbers? I know it's in--
Yeah, well, there's phone numbers on here, so I'm sure that I'll be able to contact you all that are speaking about this. And you can share it with your neighbors.
Okay, well, because the outsourced company, you know, they need to know too.
Well, and I don't have any of the answers. I'm taking the information so I can get them. So, I don't want to speak of something I don't have the answer for, so.
Okay.
Do you have anything else?
If-- being a bus driver, I know how the roads can be after you have so many buses down a bad road. I mean, the roads are good now, but are they going to tear up the road as well?
Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Sandra Erickson?
Hi. I live at 20039 Olympia. I've lived there for forty-- over forty years. I am right next door to the school. And when this all started, they're tearing up-- they took the fence out, they took all the cement out. I called to speak with Miles. I don't know his last name, but he has to do with the school grounds. And I questioned what was going on. My whole house is shaking, my walls. I mean, I said, is this going to ruin my foundation, my walls? What are they doing? And he told me that buses are going to be coming down our street. I don't know how many-- how many? I thought he said five. And I said, is it going to be blocking our driveways? I mean, those were my questions. I said, I happen to be retired person, but my daughter works. She lives with me. Other people on this street have to get out in the morning. So, I also called him about trimming trees that are in the school yard that are hanging over my driveway. That was one of my purposes. And he knows me. He's worked with me before. He's the only one I heard anything about what's going on. And the other neighbors, I didn't know if they knew or not. But, you know, I am very concerned about this. This is not something I want coming down my street. And I'm afraid it's going to devalue our homes as well. And that is a big concern of mine. I'm up in age, and I'm thinking of moving. And this is not the time to try and sell my house when this is what's going to be happening on my street. So, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Sandra. John Thompson? Go ahead, Mr. Thompson.
First of all, good evening. Good evening. It's nice to see you guys. My name is John W. Thompson III. I live at 20054 Olympia. I've been there since 1999. My wife and I raised our kids there. When they started working, I was curious about what was going on. My neighbor Cheryl O'Neal, retired Detroit Police Department, and her husband Dan O'Neal have an affidavit from them also protesting this move. And I called, and they said they were going to build the parking so the school can use our street as an access. So, I was curious. So, I go-- I called Mike Williams at the building department. And I quote, "We hadn't know anything about this. No one pulled permits through our department. This was done between Wayne County and the school." Ladies and gentlemen, we live in a nice, quiet cul-de-sac. I'm retired. My wife's retired. We cannot have this racetrack that they're proposing up and down our street. We did not-- we were not asked. We were not informed. They just said, "It's a done deal." This is America. That means we vote on everything that we do. We talk about what we're going to do. We do not-- it's not a dictatorship. Somebody just can't make these kind of decisions without being informed. I contacted your office the other day, but still waiting on a call from you, Pat. If you don't mind, if I'm calling you, Pat.
That's right. That's mine.
So, to inform you what was going on. So, I asked all my neighbors, and thank you guys for coming. I really appreciate this, to come and let our feelings be known. When they paved our roads back in 2000, 2000 road-- we had dirt roads. They contacted us. They asked us for a hundred dollars per foot. We talked about it in this room. We all voted on it. We wanted it. That's how things get done. I'm probably going over my time, but--
No, you still got two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, great.
Keep talking.
No problem. No problem. I'm retired from Ford. I was a UAW member. I was on the executive board there. I'm a skilled tradesman. I did health and safety rep. So, I'm used to this. I'm not afraid to speak my mind. I always talk from fact that I'm not going from the hip. I always get the facts. This is not the way we do things. We need to be left alone in our nice, quiet room, nice, quiet street. And I don't need the whole three minutes, but I'm glad you guys listened. Please, you got our phone numbers on that paper. Let us know what's going on. We need to stop this. If you guys don't know about it, that's a disrespect to your office, not just to us. You guys should have been informed about what's going on. Don't you agree? I see all the heads nodding. That's right. That's what I thought. I just needed to know. You guys agree with me? You guys are in position of power. That's why we voted for you. And trust me, guess what? September's coming around, October, November. I just put in my absentee ballot. Okay? So, which means I hope you guys take your oath seriously and listen to what people want. You know, we don't want this on our block. Am I right, folks? Thank you. You guys have a good day, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. I think it's-- and again, I apologize. Venus? Venus?
Yes, same five letters as the planet.
Okay, yes, all right. Well, I just want to make sure I wasn't reading it wrong. I'm sorry, ma'am.
I usually refer to the goddess, but that's good.
Okay, well, goddess, please introduce yourself and give us your address and tell us which side of your mind.
I am Venus K. Glenn. I reside at 26093 Elsinore. I've been here for five years. I've never lived in a township before. So, I'm just really confused as to how things get done in the township. People move around in different positions. And I'm like, well, when did this happen? When did that happen? But it's there. So, I'm going to be learning a lot. But my complaint today, I have several. But we're going to start with high-speed traffic. It is just blatant in the face of Redford Police Department. It's up and down five-mile road. It's up and down Beach Daily Road. And it's-- I can only speak for Kenlock. We have a muscle car that is south of Elsinore that rips and runs up and down Kenlock in the evenings, sometimes in the afternoons, maybe on the weekend. But if you happen to call, it's sort of like, well, it's during the noise part of it. It's not 11:30 at night yet, you know? So, I'm like, well, what about the speed? So, they don't have police officers to come and look at this sort of thing available. And I'm a little-- I'm a bit knotted about it. My alarm went off last year. I was like at Orchard Lake, 14-mile. My alarm is going off. And the alarm company says, "What do you want me to do? You want me to call the police?" "Yes, please." So, I make it home. My alarm is going off. And they called the police department, but they told me they didn't have anybody to literally skip one block to my house. I'm one block away. So, I have not been very happy with the help of my police department, especially if someone had actually-- all that happened was the wind blew the door to the garage open. Thank goodness. But it went off, and they were caught. Nobody moved. And when you call and complain about the speed up and down Beach Daily, five-mile and Kenlock, we don't have enough officers there to send anybody out. That's my complaint today. I'll be coming back.
Well, please do.
All right.
Please. Thank you. Okay, and I will say that it's always good when we have residents show up to show their concern about what's going on because it's not just one voice. And that means a lot to people who sit here on the board. And we will get some resolution, and there'll be some phone calls for you all. So, that's what I can tell you. Okay, next thing-- pardon me? Oh, okay. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows. The minutes of the study session of the meeting June 25th of 2024. The minutes of the regular meeting on June 25th of 2024. The warrant listed bills as of July 5th of 2024 in the total amount of $90346.05. The advertisement for bids requesting sealed bids for Handy Park Pickleball Courts beginning July 11th of 2024 through August 1st of 2024. Support.
Moving to support questions from the board. Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have announcements? Anybody have announcements for the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some announcements-- Sure. --concerning the upcoming August 6th primary. My new deputy, Darian Bird, has done a great job in recruiting election inspectors. And the big mass of polls have been plugged, but we're still looking for more inspectors because, you know, I think back to the presidential primary in 2016 where we had five chairs or co-chairs not show up. So, we'd like to have some extra people there as well. Also, the voters passed a big millage issue for South Redford schools, and they're putting that money to use by renovating their schools. And they won't be available for elections on August 6th. So, a whole bunch of you are going to be voting temporarily at a different location. But rather than-- my strategy on this is rather than confusing you with, you know, trying to find Thurston or Adam's School, I'm encouraging you to vote early here at Town Hall. Nine days before the election, you can come in this very room here and vote early between 8:30 and 4:30. Do that, you know, take advantage of the early voting. And I'd like to call on my deputy to give you some additional updates and contact information.
All right. Thank you. Right quick, if you are interested in being an election inspector that's just working the polls, it is paid and also just a great opportunity to do your community service for the township. If you go on redfordtp.com, it's right on the front page. So, I want to send a great thank you to the marketing team, to Adam, for doing that. So, now that is super simple for us to do. Fill out that application, and we'll get it. If you want to contact the clerk's office for information on absentee voting, early voting, you can do that at 313-387-2753. That's my extension, and we'll get you set up with what you need to do. Right quick, I will let you know the precincts that are changing. You will know because we are sending out postcards that has not only the location change, but it's also going to have a Google map picture. So, you can't say you don't know where it is. The street is going to be right-- the picture of the street is going to be right on the postcard. So, if you're at Hilbert, you'll be at Our Lady of Loretto. If you are at World Peace Outreach, Pierce, and Fisher, you'll be at Thurston High School. And then if you are at Jefferson and Vandenberg, you'll be at Adam's School. Again, all of those schools are under construction, so that's why we are temporarily moving those to a different location. All right? Contact the clerk's office if you have any more questions, and thank you.
Any other announcements from the board? Okay, I have a few quick ones. I just want to-- first off, we have a board meeting next week at 5:30, and I apologize to some of the board members because we were very efficient getting the post and the information out so you guys can make sure you didn't have that date tied up. Some thought that was 5:30 tonight, so I do apologize. I have three things that are, you know, I've been dealing with. First, I want to say about DTE that I've set up a meeting I'll be having with DTE and some of their people next week. If you're the people that lived-- that just had the recent outage that was caused by a cable failure at a DTE substation and supposedly most of everybody was supposed to have been restored by the end of-- by yesterday. They have a problem at the substation. They're bringing generators in to run while they repair the substation. And I will have more information to share next week with everybody. But we are-- I express that we're very unhappy that this seems to be happening in different areas of the township and affecting different people with momentary interruptions and downage for several hours. And it comes back on, it goes off. And I spent a little time with them on that. The other wonderful issue we got going is garbage in the township. Everybody knows July 1st, we switched over to Priority because they bought out GFL. And it was a great idea. And we were-- they were here at the meeting, and they told us about how the new technology and everything was going to work. I spent, you know, probably an hour and a half before I got to this meeting with Priority about the situation. I heard a lot of excuses. I said, "But people around the township don't care about excuses. We have one of our garbage picked up." And so, they have assured me that this is going to get resolved in the next couple of days. And I assured them that if they didn't, that we were going to be asking for a meeting so that everybody can have their say about how their garbage is not getting picked up. Those promises are okay, but if they're not kept, especially you can't even get through the call center. And I'm tired of hearing about what the problems are. So, I will tell you this, that rather than call the call center because I don't know if it's working or when it's going to be working, with so prior, he said, "If you can email the address that's not getting picked up and you can put your name and address about what can get picked up. And if you don't feel confident about that, you can email me directly at pmccray@redfordtownship-- the supervisor at Redford Township, twp.com. And I will forward your concerns because I want to make sure that your voice is heard. And I don't think it's been being heard on a regular basis. And now for, you know, a problem that we have in the township off and on is water that comes up if you live in the low-lying area in Redford. And there's a lot of those in our township because of where we're located. With-- we made sure that we sent out on Facebook, on our township website, and other avenues that Great Lake Water Authority issued a storm alert for tonight. And they are asking that residents in low-lying areas that are prone to flooding during a heavy rainfall to remain vigilant and out of an abundance of caution to remove items of value from the basement or get them up off the floor. So, if we do have the rain that they're talking about, which we hope we won't get any of it, but if we do, that you're being proactive and it's just a basement that got to get cleaned up rather than losing very valuable things to your family, collectibles, things that you have to replace that cost you a lot of money. So, that's what I got. And lastly, I just want to say that there's a lot of residents here. I think some wanted to speak and didn't get a chance to speak. I am more than glad to stay after. And we can go around the corner to my office. I have a meeting room in there. And we can spend a little time and talk about the problems some more because I want to make sure you feel like you got your voice heard. So, if there's nothing else, to come forward to board, this meeting is adjourned.
Can you make sure that you send board that email?
Yes, I will. I'll mail that out for seeing you. Yes, I will. I'll mail that out first thing in the morning.